I have 12 months out of the year now.
Yeah, people that don't have allergies come here and they're like. Yeah.
That needs to be a warning like before you cross the border.
So my husband.
Linn County is the top of the world, so.
Yeah.
Hasn't had horrible sinus problems in Mexico.
Yeah.
The dust came here.
One of our commissioners.
Yeah, no dust. Yeah, it's crazy. The worst part is that when it plugs you up so much, it pushes in on your, on your eardrums and then it's like, oh.
Yeah, it starts in my ears.
So I answered that, just leave it on.
Yeah, no. So if I cough or wheeze.
It's true. All right, I'm gonna hang up, yeah, we got you.
Are we just on the phone with them? Nobody on video?
We are, we are live now.
This isn't working, tell them what you want it up there.
Oh.
Or do you care?
Yeah, we should.
I tried to get it on and say it's not connected, but.
Yeah, this, these aren't up.
Does it hang on? Oh, it's not on either.
This one's gone, but it's still there. Welcome to July.
Sorry about that.
This, this, this one follows suit after that. Oh. TV plus is not available.
Uh, we have to tell that to mirror to that, right? It's computer. It's where we practice this.
They're gremlins.
Yeah.
Tell them it's his phone.
Yeah, there's no man behind the curtain today, is there?
Well, he trusted us to remember how to do it.
I remembered most of it. How did we get to mirror? Oh, after you get logged in. My apologies, everyone.
Ah, no worries.
Not needed.
Are you trying to pull teams on there?
No, I'm trying to mirror it.
Oh, um, click on this down in the, that corner, over to the corner.
Am I sharing? Does it project?
The should we want it says.
Oh, can I kill wireless system?
There we go.
Can you see it now?
Mm-hmm.
So now I can pull up my teams.
Now, if you want them to see Commissioner Stevens, you would log in another teams. In the meantime, we can get started.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know. We could, she can work on this while you get started.
All right. So, uh, let me get this in, there he is. So we're gonna open the Planning Commission meeting at 6:35 July 6th. And I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and liberty and justice for all. Right. Angela, do we need to do the roll call via, well, I guess voting there, but.
Turn the volume down.
Here, I got it.
Okay.
Everyone's abound.
I think we're good.
Okay, Chairman Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Wolfius.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner Corn.
Here.
Commissioner Unger, there, and Commissioner Gatchel is excused absence.
All right. So, uh, this time is, we'll welcome any public comment and, uh, that has nothing to do with anything on our current agenda. If somebody wants to add something or present before the commission. Doesn't look as though that's the case. So, uh, we're gonna look at the, the minutes from the June 1st meeting. If we may have anything in regards to the minutes that they'd like to be corrected or accepted the way they are.
And then they're accepted.
Motion to accept.
I would like a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to do a roll call vote? Okay.
Oh, shoot. That's what Brandon told me not to do. Okay, roll call vote. Um, Chairman Parker.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolfius.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Journey.
Aye.
Commissioner Corn.
Aye.
Commissioner Unger.
Aye.
All right. Minutes accepted the way they are. All right, so we're gonna open the hearing for, uh, zoning change for file ZMA 20-02. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 2,600, 552 square feet, located on the Lynn County assessor's map 32 CA, tax lots 4735 and 4700, and Sweet Home 97386. Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the residential low density of R1 to the zoning residential medium density R3. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. Planning Commission will hold this public hearing, make a recommendation to the city council. The council will hold a public hearing and have the deciding on this application. All right, so the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties. An opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So with that, do any of the commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application?
Can you officially open it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I didn't. I'm sorry. I'll officially open the hearing for file ZMA 2002 at 6:38. Do any commissioners have any personal bias against this application?
No.
Uh, conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Ex parte information?
No.
All right. I did drive by it, so it's about as much as I've got.
Commissioner Parker.
Yes, sir.
I don't think this is necessarily ex parte, but in years past, we have dealt with either this property or adjacent properties.
Uh-huh.
With similar issues. And I would just simply state that for the record.
Okay. So we'll, uh, jump to the staff report in regards to this.
All right, any commissioners, you'll see, um, I just got the wetland land use notification response that I added. Changed it kind of late. Um, I put these in no matter what, uh, if there's any kind of water on any of the properties, so I make sure to file with them. This just states that there may be wetlands, uh, there are maybe wetlands, so they may have to do a removal and fill permit. That's something that the applicant is gonna have to look into when they get ready to go. Um, same thing, um, different water features on the property, so you can read through this. It may impact the wetlands and it may require a certain permit. So this is just their response to the, um, just letting the applicant know. Like I said, I just got this and so that's why you're getting a paper form right now. So just to make you aware, that's what that says. So as Chairman Parker stated, um, this is application ZMA 20-02. This is a zone map amendment from the R1 to the R3 zone. This is also coinciding with a property line adjustment, but the adjustment is administrative. And so you will not be seeing that application that they are coinciding, so the property line adjustment, um, hinders on this application. That one will be going through, so once this goes all the way through, then we will look at the property line adjustment. All right, according to just a couple of things that I wanted to add here, um, so Staff Engineer Joe Grable comments, um, regarding this, uh, stormwater and, um, water recommendations. So, um, he recommends that connection services off 23rd Avenue, um, utilities are fairly deep in the Mountain View right-of-way. Commercial development sidewalks along the driveway apron on the cul-de-sac as well as frontage on Mountain View Road will be required. He has no concerns about the zone change, uh, but there are some, um, he wants to make sure that all of that gets done. There's also talking to the, um, applicant, um, many, there have been many conversations about the drainage that comes up Mountain View Road. And that was one of the reasons why, you know, that was the map, well, part of it, um, because of where the water comes, it was reduced. Put in the different parking facilities, moved it from a 12-plex to a 9-plex, even though that's not pertaining to this, but that was part of the reason why. So, uh, also according to the engineer, um, I'm sorry, this is the conclusion. I actually read that part, sorry. Um, the other part is the applicant, um, the zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on the findings, staff concludes that the proposed zone change would not significantly affect the existing transportation infrastructure in the neighborhood and is consistent with the Sweet Home transportation system. So it is at a dead end there, but, um, we wanted to make sure to address that. Um, and based on the findings listed in Section 3, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve this application. Since the request is for a zone change, staff has not recommended any conditions of approval. If you have any questions, that will be.
Questions for staff? So at this time, I'd, uh, like to go ahead and invite the applicant forward. Discuss your zone change. You could just, once you're seated, just state your name and address.
Uh, Jim Bradford, uh, 1625 Cascade Drive, Lebanon, Oregon. Uh, we had proposed, uh, zoning change, which was in the comprehensive plan. Uh, that was where the city wanted to move it and it seemed to fit with, uh, the current desire and need for housing for the city of Sweet Home. Pretty, pretty simple as far as that goes. Uh, we've worked, tried to make everything, uh, fit properly so we could, uh, you know, get proper, uh, building upon there. We have plans that have already been, uh, drawn up. We have to revise them from the 12-plex to the 9-plex. Um, and then we're ready to, as we get started moving forward, uh, with engineering. We have a site plan and, uh, worked with Geotech. We've already dealt with, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers at a DRT meeting with the city of Sweet Home, uh, with the Army Corps of Engineers and Department of State Lands. It was not, uh, it was under 50 yards, so there was no permit needed. They described what they would like him fulfill and stuff like that, so they're very helpful as far as that goes. So as far as we're, as far as we're, assuming we're, have everything ready and once we get the proper, once we get this passed, we'll at that point in time put up a sill fence and get the engineers in there and just start moving forward for this project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. You can go ahead and have a seat back here. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to, uh, anybody else that's in favor of this that's not part of the application process? Have to wait a little bit for lag in case anybody's online. Uh, anybody opposed to the zone change as far as the audience is concerned? Anybody that would like to speak neutral testimony, not for or against? All right, at this time, we're gonna close the public hearing for discussion amongst, uh, council. So we will close public hearing at 6:46. Any commissioners have any issues regarding this or? Seems like everything's kind of in order as far as drainage and things like that seems to be the only issue as far as the wetlands. And that will be determined later.
Well, our, our job is really about the zone.
We're zoning. We're just strictly zoning and it does line up with the comprehensive plan, so.
So that's, that's no question for me.
Do you have anything, Henry?
Well, you know, I just look at it in terms of, of other properties. It looks to me like there's a property to the south and the west. Probably would like to have access to 23rd Avenue. I see that. At one time, there was a road that came all the way through to Mountain View that has been vacated.
Yeah.
Uh, probably, uh, that's history as far as we're concerned.
Yeah, topographically, it's, it's not really feasible to connect 23rd to Mountain View.
You know, you kind of look at it and wonder why there isn't a little bit of a cul-de-sac there at the end of 23rd Avenue.
Yeah, it's, I think it, I think the one that's there probably was there prior to all the stipulations and requirements we have now as far as turning around a fire truck. So it is a tiny bit similar, but.
68 feet, you're not gonna turn a fire truck around on it.
No. But as far as changing the zoning from R1 to R3?
Uh, as far as the zoning is concerned, that's no problem because that neighborhood already has multifamily units in the neighborhood. I, I'm not concerned about that. I, I just see some of the layout here that could have been different and better.
On, on that note, the, the cul-de-sac is rather close to ironwood. And so the required fire, fire district turnaround would utilize ironwood.
They're treating it like a, like as a hammerhead.
Sort of, yeah. This, this would actually probably improve things because if, add the parking lot.
As far as being able to.
As far as space for folks to turn around.
Okay. Well, if nobody else has anything, we'll reopen the hearing.
Historically, and I'm just kind of vaguely remembering things in the past because of data north properties in this area. But there have been water issues in the past, water issues for the neighbors too. So I, I think, you know, the recommendations that have come on this sheet should probably be followed.
Yeah, and I, I believe they will once permits for getting to that point as far as drainage and everything else like that. But as far as the issue of zoning, no one seems to have an issue, so. I'll reopen the hearing at 6:49. Oh.
Reopen the hearing further.
Oh, I'm sorry, for the vote, I'm sorry. My gaveling.
Erase that.
What's that? Yes, I'm closing the hearing again at 6:49 and a half. My 30-second buffer. All right, so we'll, uh, anybody wanna make a motion?
I would recommend that the city council approve application ZMA 20-02 to keep updating the findings listed in the staff report.
I second.
That's okay. So.
Chairman Parker.
Uh, in favor, aye.
Mr. Wolfius.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Journey.
Aye.
Mr. Corn.
Aye.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Fantastic, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on, we are gonna open public hearing for, uh, file AXZC2001. 6:52. All right, I'm gonna find my glasses. This application is to annex an approximate, approximately a 35, 39,005 square foot property located in the city of Sweet Home's urban growth boundary into the city limits of Sweet Home. The application also requests a change to the zoning from the property's Lynn County Urban Growth Area Rural Residential 1 acre minimum to the city of Sweet Home's low-density R1 zone. So, um, the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties. An opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the land, Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So, as far as our commissioners are concerned, do we have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
So I walk past this property at least five times a week because it's on my dog-walking path. So I'm very aware of the property.
Okay.
But I don't think it will influence my decision one way or the other.
Okay. Any other personal bias?
Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my property is immediately south of this property. And even though I'm an adjacent landowner, I don't feel that, uh, I feel I can make a good decision regardless, so I'm in the hearing.
All right, does anybody have any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
No. None.
Uh, any ex parte information? Again, I've just driven by the property, so. All right.
Again, we, we have annexed several pieces here over the years, usually in a piecemeal way.
Yeah.
Uh, and I know in discussions previously was, we've kind of wondered why neighbors didn't get together and, and it's a big piece all at once, but that's history.
And I know there are talks about remedying some of that, but hopefully in the future. All right, so at this time, I'll just turn it over to Angela for our staff report.
All right, um, as Chairman Parker explained, this is annexation and a zone change. So I'm gonna read part of this here. Um, "The subject property is contiguous to the city limits of Sweet Home to the east and the property to the south. The north property lines border Alder Street, which is the main intersection of Lynn County. However, the property across the right-of-way is located within the city limits. This is considered contiguous, contiguous under ORS 222.1011. The Sweet Home Municipal Code does not provide specific criteria for annexation. However, as discussed below, the city of Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan requires that upon annexation that the zoning of the subject property be changed to the city zoning classification that is consistent with the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan map. The application for an annexation is therefore linked to the application for a zone change. For this reason, staff recommends that these applications be either both approved or both denied. This annexation proceeding was initiated at the request of the property owner. The Engineering Department provided comments to this application, which are included in Section 2 of the staff report. Engineering comments bring attention to the issue of the jurisdiction of Alder Street. The applicant's property does not include Alder Street. However, the extension of the city sewer services would most effectively be provided by extending the existing sewer line in Alder Street that is currently located to the east of the property. The sewer line would need to be extended along the full length of the subject property's frontage along Alder Street. Sweet Home Municipal Code 1308070. As the annexation is proposed, sewer extension would require work within the Lynn County portion of Alder Street and the applicant would need to obtain a work-in-the-right-of-way permit from Lynn County. The Engineering Department recommends annexing the portion of Alder Street that would be affected by this extension. However, that is not part of this application.
Right.
It's just something that, um, the engineer brought up. This is not part of this. It's just something that has been discussed.
On, on, pause it, please. On that note, um, our Public Works Department has contacted the county to attempt to initiate the process to annex those streets because having them outside of city jurisdiction is hampering other things besides this, uh, application. But that's something that is being worked on.
All right.
Just a few more in here. "The comprehensive plan map designation of the subject property is low-density residential. The goals and policies of the comprehensive plan are implemented through the application of zoning that implements the comprehensive plan map designation of the property. The low-density residential zone implements the low-density residential comprehensive plan map designation. Based on the review of the Sweet Home Municipal Wetlands Inventory Map and the National Wetlands Inventory Map, the subject property does not contain inventoried wetlands and as a result, it would not be appropriate to apply the Natural Resource Zone to the property. The subject property is located outside of the 100-year flood, flood plain. Based on the above findings, the application of the R1 zone to the subject property would be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The application complies, um, with that criteria." Going down, "The subject property is located within the city's urban growth boundary, which has been identified as the planned location for an urban development in the city. Tax lots 400 and 500 to the east were annexed to the city in 2010 and tax lot 700 was annexed into the city in 2017 under similar circumstances. They stop connection to the city sewer system. The subject property is contiguous to the Sweet Home city limits. For these reasons, staff finds that the application does comply." All right, "So for this one, um, because it is an annexation of zone change pursuant to Sweet Home Municipal Code 17104010B, the role of the Planning Commission is to review the proposal for." is to review the proposal for annexation, um, hold a hearing as it deems proper, make such findings of facts as it deems proper, and make recommendations to the council. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt the findings of section three above. Based on those findings, staff recommends that the planning commission move to recommend to the city council approval of applications AX twenty dash zero one and ZC two dash zero one, um, including the following options. After the opening of the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. Move to recommend that the city council approve applications AX twenty dash zero one and ZC twenty dash zero one. Move to recommend that city council deny applications AX twenty zero one and ZC twenty dash zero one or other." If you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for staff?
I have a question of the staff.
Yes, sir.
So, in this proposal, is the Eighth Avenue approach gonna be dealt with if we're taking this portion into the city from the county?
So, um, from what I understand from our engineer Joe, and unfortunately, he is not here tonight, um, that will not, that is a separate, um, issue. So it will have to do with the, when they get ready, when, if and when they ever annex in Alder Street itself, that will be taken into account during that time.
Um, also in answer to that, we, we talked about, I mentioned previously about public works seat, um, starting the process to annex, um, that portion of Alder Street, the, at the same time, Eighth Avenue is included in that discussion. So ideally, uh, we would take care of both of those at the same time. But right now, what we know of the process is it would require the county to, uh, draft a, an agreement for the city to take over maintenance of those streets and, and where, and for both parties to, to sign that agreement, so, um, we will let you know when that happens, but, um, we haven't heard back from the county yet.
Well, so Blair, how far up Alder Street would we be negotiating with the county?
Um, basically from, uh, from where the current jurisdiction is now, um, extending our, our jurisdiction to, um, essentially Elkhorn to that intersection. Maybe, probably a little bit beyond to make that intersection entirely within our jurisdiction.
That's not sure I was hoping you were gonna say.
Yeah, that's what needs to happen. And because there, there's, uh, for a long time, there was a, a, um, a gate over that street, and the reasons for that was that that intersection did not meet the county's, um, standards for intersection. Uh, there was some, some improvements that needed to be done to Alder in order to make that up to their standards. And, and so because it didn't meet those standards, they insisted on that gate being closed. And the only way to change that is either take jurisdiction of it or spend a whole lot of money to make the road improvements that would bring it up to the county's standards. Recently, though, something happened to the gate, we don't know what, it's, it's gone.
Yeah.
That, to my knowledge, the city has not taken any action on that, and we haven't been told by the county that they've done anything. So for all we know, somebody's the new owner of a gate, but, uh, that's, that's all we know, it's very odd.
Greg said to me, somebody really rammed the gate really heavy.
And maybe that's what happened, and the county just took it off rather than try to repair it.
Yeah, that, that gate was, uh, is no big whoop if somebody stole it because it was in pretty sad shape. So is, is the county standards different than the city standards on, on that intersection?
Um, yeah, my understanding, from what I've been told, yes, the county standards are different, and, um, I mean, the city does have standards in the city, if, if this was a new development, the city would insist on, on certain, uh, standards being put in place. As it stands, we don't really have any leverage with the property owner or, or any way to get the county to bring it to our standards, and it's in the city's interest to have that flow of traffic, and so we've kind of taken the standard, we'd, we'd rather just take on maintenance and bring it into our jurisdiction, and someday, when we can find some funding and, and get the right project going, uh, we can get that intersection made, put in a better shape. But at this time, we, for emergency purposes, for traffic flow purposes, we just think it needs to be open, and if bringing it into our jurisdiction is the way to do that, then we'll take it.
Not uncommonly, the city requires that certain things be brought up to their standard before we accept them. That should be part, part of the negotiation with Lynn County and see if we can't.
Yeah.
Get a little bit out of there first.
It, it would be nice, and, and we would like to do that, I, I don't know that it's likely, um, because, mostly because the, the county is content to leave it closed, and they haven't wanted to put anything into that street prior to now, and it's such a small portion that it's not that much maintenance cost on their part. And so I, I don't know that the investment is really worth it from their point of view.
I know in, in the past, that the county is usually pretty happy to wheel something to the city. Uh, I know this happened on Tenth Avenue and other streets up there. So I personally would be in favor of doing what we're doing, but I'd also suggest we try to negotiate with the county to cough up some dollars to bring it up standard.
And I think this is something we'll definitely put on a future agenda for a meeting is to, is to see where we are with this, but as far as this application is concerned, um, at this time, if nobody else has any questions for staff regarding this, I would like to invite the applicant to come forward.
I'm not the applicant.
Nope. Our applicant is not here. Okay, um, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Any neutral testimony, not for or against? I'd invite you to, if you could come forward, we have a little, um, microphone right there. Just state your, uh, name and address.
Alan Stutz, I'm, uh, neighboring property eight four five Alder Street. Alls I received in the mail was the request of the public hearing and the map. No context of why.
Okay.
Wanting to annex this property, and, and so my concern is, is, as a neighboring property, is why are they trying to annex that property into the city? When we were doing ours, uh, there was discussion of annexing in multiple properties because everybody has piecemealed those in.
Right.
And I think the application need just to annex in my piece due to the need to hook up to the city sewer system. So just kind of my concern is, is what's happening with that property?
Okay.
I have no idea.
As far as the applicant's reason for filing?
So unfortunately, when we get in an application like that, that particular piece is not required for the notices, it's just that they've requested annexation. So in your case, I, I assume you requested annexation in order to connect to the sewer?
Correct.
And, and that would be a likely, uh, thing, I don't know for sure, have they, have they said?
Yes, in my discussion with her, that's one of those connecting to the, uh, city utilities.
Okay, so, yeah, we talked, his, one of your comments were, uh, bringing the sewer up Alder Street further, which is a long distance from where I stopped it. There's probably a better connection option because of the location of their house is to go straight across to Eighth Street, there's a manhole sewer right in Eighth Street there, which would be a shorter shot for them to go straight across, um, in there than going all the way up and tearing up, you know, twice the, the roadway than going straight across, so.
Okay.
That was just my concerns is, you know, who's happening in that area, then. Secondly, noticing that that gate was missing, which my understanding was a safety concern of the reason that gate was there, and now it's gone, so.
Mr. Stutz, just to let you know, when you do get those notices, so we post, um, on our website, on the calendar, if you look on there, we post the full, um, staff report and everything.
Staff report, okay.
About the week before, so if you ever get a notice again, just remember that the week before the meeting, the staff report, it'll all be on the website, so you can always pull up all the information. But yeah, um, legally, we don't, all we have to do is send a notice, we don't, but you can request the rest of the information.
Yeah, I, I went out there, but probably too early, so, so it's a week before that shows on.
Yeah, it, it should be, so I normally have it to these guys by the Monday evening, uh, prior week.
I'll keep that in mind.
As for the, as for the sewer, uh, whatever route they take, they'll probably look at the, how far, and they'll look at the, the impact on the street, and they'll look at the depth of those sewer lines to see what will make the most sense engineering-wise to the property. So we'll, uh, we'll see how that goes, and that, and again, that'll, a lot of that'll hinge on getting jurisdiction over the public right-of-way from the county.
Alright.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for your time coming down.
You bet.
Appreciate it. So at this time, we're gonna close the public hearing for discussion amongst the commissioners at seven oh nine. Anybody have any?
Well, I think it makes sense to connect to the sewer line, um, you know, that's been an issue with all those properties on the south side of Alder, so, um, you know, if that's the main motivation, then it makes sense to me.
Yeah, especially in an area that size, if their septic field goes out, then kind of stuck. And if you guys looked at that map with the U G B, it's just all over the place in the city limits, they just need.
Completely surrounded by city.
Yeah, there's, some of them are an island. That's a little crazy, but.
These, these applications are extremely rare for us because they're.
Yeah.
Sweet Home was very proactive in, in basically annexing everything in our urban growth boundary, except for those few who didn't want it, and, uh, and so we have this, these tiny little spots that are within our urban growth boundary but not within the city.
Yeah.
Not very many, and so the possibility of actually annexing anything is, is actually really slim right now.
Yeah.
So this is rather unusual.
Anybody else have any issues or anything they'd like to discuss on it?
Motion.
Just a comment, I guess it's our, our opportunity, but request for annexation, like the previous ones, I get to talking too much and about too many other general related issues, but typically, when, when a property extends a sewer line, they extend it to the next property line.
Correct.
So there isn't any, uh, loss of opportunity for others to do that. And there's certainly an opportunity with this property for division into anywhere from two to four lots, so, uh, you know, the sewer line really should be extended to the end of the property, the next property line.
And I, I believe that was stated too, that it, it would go all the way to the far end of the property.
And I, I certainly support the city in trying to annex Alder Street. So anyway, I, I would support the proposal.
Okay. Anybody like to, uh, make a motion?
Make a motion to recommend that the city council approve applications AX twenty oh one and ZC twenty oh one.
Alright, have a motion in a second.
I'm Volco votes, Chairman Parker.
Aye.
Mr. Walthius.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Journey.
Aye.
Mr. Corn.
Aye.
Mr. Under.
Aye.
She passes.
Excellent. So now on to other commission business. So you're more than welcome to stay and hang out, so we're just kind of going over some, probably update some things like that. Thank you for your time.
Development code, well, first before I, uh, share any of that, I just wanted to update you on the city's current state when it comes to, uh, the state guidance on how to handle a pandemic and so forth. As you are probably aware, there was an order last week for, uh, mandatory mask use in indoor public places. The interesting thing about the, what we're, that order is that it actually does not, does not directly apply to government buildings, that they left that out, it, it's, which is, in my opinion, kind of silly, maybe they just thought, well, most government buildings are, are gonna have their own rules anyway, and we're not, we don't really have to worry about it. But the, this city manager and, and, uh, and department head's kind of meant to, to go over the issue, and it's, it's really not that big of a deal for us to comply with, with it. Essentially, when people come into city hall, they're asked to wear masks, staff wear masks anytime they come up to the counters, anytime they come into the public areas of, of, uh, city hall, and when we're in the hallways, when we're at our workstations or in our offices, and then, and we have enough distance between people, then masks can be removed. And likewise, with public meetings like this, once we, everybody is settled and we are far enough apart from each other, then the masks can be removed if desired, um, but any other time, we mask up, um, to walk around pretty much, and, um, and so we, it's nice to have masks that you can pull up and down, um, pretty quickly. I think this one's rather fashionable with kind of the ascot look, but, uh.
Lacking the smoking jacket.
Yes, that's what I need, I need, I need the kind of purple velvet something. As for, so that's, that's just where, where we are with that recent, uh, stuff, we still don't have any information of any more than one case in Sweet Home total. Uh, the, the state doesn't tell us how many cases there's, there's been, the most they will say, uh, is for our zip code, we have one to nine. Once you have more than nine, then they'll tell you the actual number, but, uh, we're still in the one to nine category, and we, all indications are that we'll probably stay in the one to nine category. So that's kind of the, the status of that. Development code is, we have drafts from, uh, the, our consultants from John Morgan and Walt Wendelowski, uh, Angela and I are going through them, and we've pulled in Joe to, to look at one of the, the, um, one of the articles that, that focuses on more engineering aspects to get his take on it. So far, it's looking pretty good, my, we, we're providing comments to them to kind of get it in shape where we can have a draft that can come before you. And so I, I like, my, my first impressions are that I like the organization of it, it's easier to follow, and, and it appears that it would be easier to use.
I concur.
And, uh, and as we go along, we're trying to insert areas of priority for, for the city, uh, mostly when it comes to, um, making the process work easier for us, a code that's more clear to the public, clear to developers, and more friendly. We really want to get as much, um, as many unknowns out of the way, so that if somebody wants to do some developing, it's very clear what they can do and where, and what the process is, so.
And when the time comes, we'll all be given the opportunity to take a copy of that home and.
Yes.
Kind of come through it.
This is just the initial draft, um, that Walt sent us, so we could review it, compare it against, um, our current code, look at different things that we say, oh no, we still want this from our old code, or put this in, and so once they get all of our comments back, like Blair said, they'll put together a second draft, and then that's probably, I don't know, I can't remember, but I think that's when it'll start.
So we'll see, we'll see second or third or something.
Yeah.
And a lot of things are carried over, a lot of the recent developments, like the sign code and the, and the wireless telecommunications facilities, those things are basically being brought over almost entirely, uh, the way they were into this new code, just kind of changed to fit with the structure, uh, to make sure it makes sense, and, and that way we're not losing out on the work that was done in the past and, and issues that the public was happy with and wanted done. So, um, there, hopefully by the time, when, once it gets to you, we'll, we'll have the, the, the shell of it really, um, really in place, and, and the most important thing for, for you all as the appointed officials on this is to look at the, the real substance of it, the, um, the, you know, lot coverage. officials on this is to look at the real substance of it. The, you know, lot coverage, the lot sizes, you know, what uses are allowed in a zone and so forth. Those things, because mainly as staff, what we care about is that it's clear and organized. It's not our place to determine whether a lot should be, you know, 8,000 square feet in the R1 zone, or 7,000 square feet, or, and so forth. Those details, I think, are really more your area. And so those are the things that, when the time comes, we would ask you to focus on to make sure that this code really gives the look and feel of Sweet Home that you all want Sweet Home and your constituents want Sweet Home to be. So unfortunately, with COVID and stuff that's been going on, it's been, trying to get the time together to review the drafts that we've had, that Walt has supplied us, has taken a lot longer than we initially anticipated. But we are well into it now, and hopefully we'll be done with that soon.
And I can say from my personal point of view, just reading them, knowing our current code, and just from an organizational standpoint, it is so much more clear. Definitions are much better, just descriptions, the way things are broken down. That was one of my issues when I first came here and tried to learn the code. Having to bounce around everywhere was very confusing to me. Now I know it, but the way that this is set up, I think even if someone, a community member came in and said, I want to see this code, it'll make much more sense. And it'll make sense for us having to explain it when people come in. I won't have, I won't be confused even when I have to go talk about it. So the way that it's organized is great.
So is it just, is it better verbiage or less legal ease?
Yeah, just the way that's kind of gone through, like one of my suggestions, one of the things that I wanted to see is we have multiple places where definitions, definitions are all in one place. And there's actually more than what we used to have. So that's a nice addition. So you just go to one place, and you can look up any of the definitions that pertain. But there's just the way that it's just organized, you know?
It's pretty well organized by kind of what you want to do. You know, if you're wanting to develop some property, you can, you look at it, and it's, and you know what zone you're in, and you just go to that zone. It makes it very clear that these are the permitted uses, these are the outright permitted, these have special, special standards attached to them, these are conditional uses. And to some degree, it was like that, but not really. It was not consistent throughout the code, and it made it difficult to work with.
And there's a lot less of, you know, you're in the C1 zone, go back to the R1 zone, go back to this zone. So there's some outright just listed instead of going back. It does every once in a while a reference, well, this is in there. But that was one of the things that makes it difficult, because I've got to have three different zones open when I'm talking to somebody, and they kind of list it outright. So, and just without getting into the meat of what's in it, there are some new things in it that I really like, some possible new zones that I think are going to be, you know, key. Just some of the new ways that we might look at it. And like I said, these are just right now, we're just kind of going, yay, this looks cool. But you guys will ultimately make the decision and say, yeah, we want it this way or we don't. We're just kind of going through the meat of it right now, just to do some comparisons. But so far, I really like it, and I've done a lot of reading.
One thing that we've, one thing that we've talked about is this recreation commercial zone and what to do with it, because it's rather confusing. And so one thing that they've done is it's retained in there, but it also has other options of, here's what you could replace it with, and how that would look. And, which is not that big, pretty much puts it in your court to kind of determine how that looks. One that I'm particularly interested in is that, what did he call it? It's like an employment land zone or something?
That was the RC, that was the alternate to the RC.
Yeah, the alternate to the RC was...
M, ME?
No, no, that was the mixed use. I got it right here. Maybe I don't.
Well, I was looking for that. The other one that is in there that we don't have is a public zone. So like, Sankey Park is all residential load density.
Oh, right.
So the areas that schools or parks, we will, you know, with approval, there would actually be a zone for it now. So that's a plus in my book, you know, because it's very difficult when you've got a park and it's in the R1 zone, or half of it's in the R1 zone, and trying to deal with building, like us putting the playground equipment in it right now, but it's an R zone. So we have to do the conditional use permit and go through that whole process. So...
Yeah, it was a, it was a mixed use employment zone, is what, is the way they talked about it. So it almost, it just made it very flexible, so that you could do industrial uses, you could have commercial uses. It really, and it promotes a plan development, so that, you know, you have these large parcels, and it basically puts it on the owner of the large parcel to put together a plan of how they want the different uses throughout their property organized. And then they get that whole plan development approved, and it makes it very, very flexible.
So it's more master plan-ish on their part?
Because they're such large, I mean, most of the property in those, in the recreation commercial zone is so large, you know, we're talking 150, 300 acres, you know, all owned by one, one group. And so it really lends itself to being master planned. Anyway, there's exciting stuff, and I'm, hopefully we can get through this soon and get it back to Walt when we can get another draft that you all can take a look at.
I think I'm having to start with Article 30, it's the longest one so far.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
But no, I think you'll, I think you'll, I think you'll be happy, at least with, you know, at least some of it, you know, while you're deciding it's, yeah. It's up to you guys, but I'm happy.
You're the one that looks at it every day, all day.
Yeah.
So is there any activity in the recreation zone going on right now?
We don't have...
We've seen master plans in the past.
The, I haven't heard that much from, Phil Ordway and Troy Cummins own the eastern part of all of them. And I haven't heard much from them recently. They've been talking about moving forward with a first phase of residential development in there under the old, previous plan development. And they're approaching the window of when that's not any good anymore. So they better get moving if they're going to do something. But they were, they were going to start that zone, and then they said they wanted to amend their, their plan development. I said, well, that's like applying for a new one. They're like, okay, fine. So they, they said that they previously told me that this summer they expected to have something into us. Obviously, that's not, that hasn't happened, at least not yet. I'm expecting it, it's probably going to be at least a little while longer. But they, every once in a while, I hear from them, and they're, they apparently have some partners onboard, some developers that would be actually doing most of the, putting in the infrastructure and creating the lots and so forth. But I don't really have, we haven't seen any applications, so nothing much is going on there. The other side, of course, is owned by the county right now. They, there, there have been some developments with that where the county and the consultants that have been working with the county on the cleanup have put in some documents to DEQ for DEQ to review. And those, and their request with those studies has been that there are certain areas of the property that they're asking for a no further action designation for those areas. What that means, an NFA no further action, that's a designation that DEQ can give a property that basically says, we're not requiring you to do any other cleanup. If it stays within these conditions, you're good. And anybody who buys the property from you can rest assured that they can do these things, and they'll be fine. And usually, it goes with the use. If somebody, if they get this NFA determination for commercial or industrial uses, then if anybody wants to go in there and put it in commercial or industrial use, they don't have to worry about getting approval from DEQ because it's already there. If they wanted to do residential, then the threshold is much higher for getting that.
Cleaner.
Cleaner. Then DEQ would say, well, you got to clean it up more. But the likelihood of any of it being, of very much of it being residential at this point is kind of slim. We don't think that's like, we have, we have enough residential land elsewhere that there's no reason why this needs to be desirable as residential land. So that's, that's good. There's progress being made when it comes to the cleanup. And with the city's plan, ultimately, is for, for that property, all will be in private hands and get redeveloped. But what we really want is access through that property into the former Knife River Quarry that the city currently owns, because that's the plan to be the future home of the jamboree, and lots of other stuff, we hope. So the plan is for a dedicated right-of-way through the county's property that would connect to 24th Avenue. We have a deal in place to widen, to get the property necessary to widen 24th Avenue. That's, that's progressing with the owners of H&amp;H Machine and the, on the corner there, 24th and Main. Essentially, we would do some land swaps to make that work out. That's, that's projected to go a fourth. We just have some, some things that we're negotiating with them, trying to get it all settled. But the good, the new development on that is that we have a letter from the railroad supporting a crossing at 24th Avenue. And so we were going to use that with an application to ODOT Rail to, to get an approved crossing. We also need to have right-of-way on the other side for that crossing to, for that application, because ODOT Rail's not going to give you a crossing unless there's a...
Somewhere to go.
Funny.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So, but, but at least we, we have the railroad onboard, and we're, I'm working on the county. So we, you know, baby steps.
Well, at least we're moving forward with it.
Yeah, yeah. The other pending applications, for some reason, right now Angela has just been swamped with lots and lots of applications, which is good.
Yes, so right now I have, let me go through here. One, two, three, four. Four property line adjustments, three partitions, one conditional use. I just got another one in today, but I haven't reviewed it yet. Multiple fence permits. Most of these are administrative review. You'll see the conditional use permit next month. But yeah, there's a lot. So five of these are actually, the Victor's property's up on...
I was going to ask.
So what he's doing, and it's, it's good. We've been talking about this for a long time. Once the zone change happened and got approved, most of his properties are kind of all over, the way that they're shaped and the size of them. He's actually straightening the board, you know, straightening all the property lines out, so it'd be a nice little straight line. All of them will be, he's moving his property lines around, so that they will all be in compliance with at least 5,000 square feet, if not more. And then there's two partitions now that he did that. So it'll be nicely cleaned up up there. The property, some of the properties, like there was the little piece that he couldn't get anything on...
Right.
Last year, I think it was. So that one will be, that one will be two criteria. I think it's a little over 5,000 square feet now. So, so all of these put together, so each line, each movement had to be a separate application. And so, so I think, just, they won't go in front of you, but just so you guys know what they are. So it'll be a nice little setup up there. I mean, it'll be much nicer than it was. It won't have all these weird sized properties that are all different sizes and shapes, so they'll all be much closer.
I saw those applications in the paper, and I thought, no, it's busy there. But I couldn't, I didn't take enough time to go through each one.
Like I said, there's one right after another that came in there for a little while. And I just looked at Blair, and I was like, get ready to start signing.
Well, that's exciting, though, that he's cleaning it up and straightening everything out.
Yes. And, you know, and he wanted to do that before, but without the zone change, we had to do the whole zone change first. And so he's been pretty patient, waiting for that to get done. And now that that got done, we had some surveyors go out and do all the site plan reviews for us. So the way that, the way that it's going to look when it's done, I think, will be much nicer than what it was. So...
All right.
Yeah, there's no slack on me when it comes to planning use applications. I can do that.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss?
That's it from us.
Close the planning commission meeting?
Can we talk about...
There's a portion of the agenda for planning commissioner's comments from each other.
Can we talk about the date of the September meeting? Are we going to move that to a different day?
Yeah, I was actually going to put that on the August meeting, but yes, we can talk about it right now.
Okay.
So that's fine.
August is fine.
No, we can do it. Now that you write it up, we might as well just do it. So it's just a matter of, do you guys want to do it the Tuesday right after, or on the third Monday? That's the other alternate planning commission day.
Yeah, first and third Monday.
You work Tuesday nights?
Yeah, I work Tuesday through Friday night.
So that would push us to the 14th or the 21st?
The 21st.
So the first, the first Monday is the 7th, that's Labor Day. And so...
Yeah.
You want to do the, have the 21st of September instead?
That's fine.
That's fine.
I'm open.
Yeah.
Greg, are you okay with that?
21st is good.
Okay.
I probably cannot commit. We have a trip planned sometime in September, and I don't know the exact dates.
Okay.
I'll make sure to get that out and make sure that everybody knows.
Have anything else you'd like to?
Yeah, I got something to say.
Yeah. That sounds loaded right there.
Did we ever decide anything about people that decided not to show up for their hearings? It's, to me...
Greg, they are required to. We recommend that they do, but they are not required to. They don't have to show up to their meetings. You know, we say, I think I had a conversation with Cindy whether she was going to be able to or not, and I don't remember if we had what the full-on conversation was. But I did look at our code, because that has been brought up a couple times at these meetings, and they are not required to come to these meetings. They don't have to testify on their own behalf. It's up to them. So we can't require them to do that.
So basically...
An important question for them, we can delay that.
They have to do it, yeah.
Want some information from you.
And we've done that before, to where they weren't here. And so we postponed, we kept it open and postponed it to the next meeting. So, yeah.
It just delays their whole process. And, I mean, it's in their benefit to show up.
And I do send them out an email reminder and just saying, you know, just to remind you, if you want to be there to testify on your behalf, please do. But again, it's up to them, whether they do it or not. So...
Okay, I just, I was wondering, because it didn't really apply tonight. But if I did have a question of them, I would like them to be there so I could ask it.
Yeah, I agree.
And you should. I think that's a perfectly, if it's a substantive question that really impacts your decision on the, on that application, then you should be able to get an answer from the applicant on that issue. And if it means staying the meeting, and, you know, and meaning again on that, that's certainly within the commission's purview. And they'll have learned their lesson, I'm sure.
Yeah, by waiting another 30 days.
I think the chances are that anybody who has a relatively complex application, or anything that's going to be contentious, they're, most likely, they're all going to be here.
Yeah.
But for cases like tonight, I think you're, you'll probably see it again.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything they'd like to chat about? No?
I just want to officially welcome Candy.
Oh, yes.
We haven't, she's not here in person yet. She's been on the videos, so I just wanted to personally say welcome, you know? Nice, nice to see her face in person.
Yes. Thanks for giving us your time. Nostalgia in Sweet Home. Exciting.
Drawing the fun.
Yeah. All right, if that's the case, then we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:35, 7:37.
See you, Greg.
Thank you, everybody.
See you, Greg.
See ya.
Good night.
Good night.